Something to do first.
Close, though. It sounds like pen.
Pen, bone, whatever.
Pen, bone.
Alex Smith.
Boothcase, car keys.
Okay.
He looks more like the hardened side. I look more like the gary and slash.
Okay.
You know it's true.
Down in Texas somewhere.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't play this game.
What time is it? Clock is start?
Seven, seven.
It's gonna be there before seven.
That's what I heard.
Guys, ready? Ready? All right, we'll get this show on the road. Call the order, the February, meeting number three, February three, two thousand and twenty, here at the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers City Hall. Would you all please join me with the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Mopin.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Kreitzer.
Here.
All right. Greg Murray, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Linda Murray. I skipped her. Sorry, Linda. All right, first, we have, so we have some pleasant business to do tonight. I'm looking forward to it. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's a Medal of Merit presentation. As we all know, all officers of the Burlington Police Department have an opportunity to have a positive impact on a person's life on a daily basis. Sometimes they're able to be at the right place, the right time, and make the biggest impact by saving a person's life. The Medal of Merit is the department's second highest award and is given to officers who distinguish themselves by bravery, heroism, or by exceptional behavior during an extraordinary hazardous situation and resolve the issue without injury to any person. On January ninth, two thousand and twenty, at approximately three fifty-six a.m., Burlington Police Officers and firefighters were dispatched to a structure fire at one thirteen Fleming Court. Officer Jake Jenkins, Officer Keegan Jacobson, and Officer Tyler Henning arrived on the scene to find the rear portion of this residence engulfed in flames. A bystander had observed the smoke and flames and called nine-one-one before attempting to enter the front of the residence. Officer Jenkins, Jacobson, and Henning attempted to enter through the open front door of the home but retreated due to heavy smoke, although they could hear the subject yelling for help from the back bedroom of the split-level home. The officers located the victim's bedroom, elevated roughly seven feet off the ground on the side of the house. Officer Jenkins went to the neighbor's home and borrowed a six-foot step ladder so that he could use his ass to break out the bedroom window. Officer Jacobson and Jenkins, with flames right above them, had to encourage the subject, who was on oxygen, weak, and incoherent at times, to reach for the officers. All three officers pulled the man from the window and fell from the ladder to the ground before carrying him to the front of the house as he had gone unconscious and was barely breathing. Several rounds of CPR were administered by responding ambulance personnel, and then the subject was taken to Great River Medical Center and later transported to the University of Iowa Hospital and Clinics. Two of the three officers were treated and released for smoke inhalation. Special Agent Mark Weedman from the State Fire Marshal's Office spoke with the victim several days later, only to learn that he remembers hearing someone banging on his door. He thought they were breaking into his home. Thank goodness, a short time later, he realized that his house was on fire and the police officers were trying to help him. This small detail alone makes the rescue event even more notable. Special Agent Weedman concluded that the details listed above only reflect a small portion of the stressful and dangerous actions taken by our police officers. He asked for me to please thank them and pass along his gratitude. It is with a great amount of pride that I present Officer Jenkins, Officer Jacobson, and Officer Henning with the Burlington Police Department Medal of Merit for their lifesaving actions on January ninth, two thousand and twenty. Gentlemen, please step up. Officer Henning. Congratulations. This is also yours. Officer Jacobson.
Well done.
That is yours. Officer Jake Jenkins.
Well done.
Thank you, gentlemen. Again, Mayor and Council, it goes without saying how proud we are of their service and their commitment and their obligation to this community to try to keep it safe the best way they know how, and they did a fantastic job on that night, and I can expect nothing less from them in the future. It's, they've been, they've been really gracious with this and have done some interviews, and they're out doing their job, and they leave it at that, and they're very humble about their duties on this evening, but it is a great honor that I present to them this Medal of Merit. Thank you.
Outstanding.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chief, if you want to hang out real quick. Well, next, we have a, first of all, sorry. I just gotta get this in. Yeah, I know you guys are probably gonna tip out. Next, we have a proclamation for the two thousand and nineteen Officer, Police Officer of the Year, Police Officer Tyler Henning. Bill?
Yes, I have a proclamation. Whereas in two thousand, the Burlington Police Department instituted an award for Officer of the Year whereby officers had the opportunity to nominate a fellow officer for his or her contribution to the department and the community as a whole. And whereas the award was renamed the Lieutenant Steve Cassidy Officer of the Year Award in memorial to Lieutenant Cassidy, who exemplified the characteristics of an officer going above and beyond expectations on a daily basis. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, award recipient has been with the Burlington Police Department since August fourth, two thousand and sixteen. He possesses a body of work which falls under what semi-called MTE standard, meaning they do not just meet the expectation, rather they achieve more than expected with a relationship to their job performance. The information he has collected on gang activity in the city of Burlington has elevated the department's ability to address violent acts wreaking havoc on our community. This officer has provided valuable intel, which has assisted in the apprehension and imprisonment of many career criminals, while also working diligently to take guns off our streets. He has shown his willingness to work countless hours gathering information to slow the narcotic and gun violence hindering our city, and his work will continue to assist with investigations to come. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby announce and proclaim the twentieth award recipient of the two thousand and nineteen Officer Year Award to Officer Tyler Henning in recognition for his positive attitude in providing service to our community throughout two thousand and nineteen. We therefore call upon all citizens to especially honor and show their sincere appreciation to Officer Henning for his dedication and his sacrifices he makes by deed, remark, and attitude. Signed and sealed this third day of February two thousand and twenty, John D. Velips, Mayor.
You guys are gonna vote down there so we don't miss out on anything. Kat? Kat? Would you like to have a P word? First of all, let's get you two up here, too. I wanna get all birds of one stone here today. All right, fellas. Everybody try to think he looks like a morphine. Okay? Please have the Q with us.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a certificate here for the Officer of the Year, and I'd like to read that if I could, please.
Please do, sir.
Absolutely.
Officer of the Year two thousand and nineteen is hereby awarded to Officer Tyler Henning for his dedication, work ethic, and commitment to the Burlington Police Department and citizens of Burlington, Iowa, and for his efforts collecting data on gang activity, providing information to great assistance in apprehending career criminals, and establishing relationships to show the narcotic, or to slow the narcotic and gun violence hindering our streets. Presented this third day of February two thousand and twenty. Signed myself. I just want to talk a little bit about this award. This award is an award within the department where they're nominated by their peers, no matter who it is, can nominate another officer. So, an officer gets nominated for this award every year, and they're selected by their peers for whatever the reason may be. That is noted on the nomination itself. So, it's a great honor. I personally knew Steve Cassidy, and I knew his work ethic, and I worked with Lieutenant Steve Cassidy for many years, and I remember his work ethic, and I just need to say that he would be very proud of Officer Henning and the work that he does put in as it relates in this award and certificate. So, thank you, Mr. Henning.
Outstanding, Chief.
Just wanted to thank you to everybody. Thanks for your time for coming out here. I am very humbled for this award. It's a great honor. Not much for words to say, but I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, everybody who is here. Thank you, everybody. And I just want to say the other three officers that were also nominated are also equal to us as well. They're very hard-working officers as well. So, again, thank you, guys.
Outstanding. Thank you. Now, I'd assume the most of you came here to witness that, so you're more than welcome to leave if you so choose, or you can stay for the exciting part of the meeting. If you do leave, though, please welcome me, or go with me on a hero send-off.
Nobody wanted to save for the meeting.
No, I know. It's amazing how that works. All right. We're gonna move on with the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item One, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, which is minutes of previous meetings, payrolls, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds, resolutions. Resolution number one is a resolution approving final acceptance and release retention monies for the two thousand and nineteen Aspen and Dill Reconstruction Project. Resolution two is a resolution approving the nuisance abatements for various properties. Resolution approving, number three, is a resolution approving for the purchase of a commercial dishwasher for lab glassware from Midland Scientific, Inc. of Nebraska. Number four is a resolution approving the lease agreement with Des Moines County Historical Society for the Hawkeye Log Cabin in Crepeau Park. We also have set dates for public hearings. Number one is consideration of sale on Lot Three of Parkview Subdivision, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. That's February eighteenth. Number two is consideration of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one maximum property tax dollars for the city of Burlington. That is also February eighteenth. Number three is consideration for plans and specifications for the two thousand and twenty Dankworth Park Tennis Courts Repair Project, March second, two thousand and twenty. Number four is consideration of the two thousand and twenty Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to the use of incremental property tax revenues. That will be on March second. Number five is consideration for development, for a development agreement with Merge LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in the amount not to exceed two million dollars, and that is March second, two thousand and twenty. And we have three appointments: TripAdvisor Board Dave Hazel and Robert Walker, Human Rights Commission Bob Fleming, Renewable Energy Committee Kirsten Baugh. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to remove any of these items from the Consent Agenda? Council? Not seeing any?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item One, Consent Agenda.
Second.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
All right, next ordinances. Mr. Rinker.
Your Honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending the mayor and council compensation provisions of the City of Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances.
I need a second.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Anyone from the audience have any specific concerns on this ordinance?
Chris Repke, two thousand and twenty-two, Madison Avenue. I did, you guys all should have received a letter from me, and I'm suggesting a different formula than this, the CPI, and, you know, I know you're adding the CPI, but it's also true, a lot of households don't receive that type of increase each year, whatever it might be, whether one percent, one point five. I know you max it at a three. My suggestion was to make it a percentage of the median household income of Burlington. That way, then, everybody knows, there's no question, no fights. If the City Council's giving itself a raise, oh, they're doing better than me. I didn't get a one point five percent CPI increase in my pay this year. It was only half a percent. And so, if you make it to a percentage of the average household income, whatever percentage, I suggested fifteen percent, it would, I think, be more equitable for the citizens of Burlington, too. If the city does better, i.e. the citizens' pay increases, so does the City Council. Unfortunately, if it goes down, so does the City Council. And the average household income, I picked that up off of the U.S. Census Bureau website. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Shane Campbell, two thousand and one-twelve Mason Road. First off, I'd like to just thank you guys for the hard work that you do. It's a tough job, but somebody's gotta do it. When it comes to this situation, I think there's nothing to do but to follow through on this. There's no precedent that is being set here. Those are raises in eighty-one, and then they turned around and did it again in nineteen ninety-seven. So, it hasn't been done in two decades. I heard that there was some opposition from some previous council members. I would just like to remind you all in the council that they all cash their checks. In ninety-seven, it was a two hundred dollar raise. Again, that's over two decades ago. They recognized that they needed to change this in the eighties, and they recognized it again in the nineties. So, I think you guys need to make sure that you recognize it now. And two thousand and twenty, for those that are in opposition that have not served, I just don't think they know the magnitude and the gravity of serving on council. I don't think they know the demands. And I'm not saying that they're ignorant. They're just ignorant to sitting behind there. Until you're sitting behind that seat, you just can't know. Hold on. I'm not done yet. I'm asking you guys, somebody said, well, it's selfish for the council to give yourselves a raise. First off, you're not giving yourself a raise. This is set for the future. And secondly, I think it's selfish not to. This is not about you guys. Even with you, Bill, I'm pleading with you tonight, cowboy. I'm asking you to change, not because of the pressure, because of the, you guys have to understand, sitting behind that seat, you can't fold because of pressure. We don't need people that every time somebody comes in and puts the squeeze on them, that they fold under pressure. No, we're counting on you guys to do what is right, even when the pressure is on. You have to have thick skin, and you have to be able to handle the pressure, but this is right. Even the situation, the, what you guys have implemented, oh, it's apt. Make no mistake about it. This needs to be done. And you guys have already opened up this carton. Now's not the time to run. Now's the time to, let's just, let's just handle this, and then it's done. I had some other things to say, but I think I'm gonna close out with that. I'm gonna ask you guys to do the right thing. Again, this is the right thing. We said a long time ago, let me give you the origin or the genesis of this. We said we wanted to make sure that we changed and gave the City Council a facelift. That's what we said. We wanted to make sure that we had full representation, because we know how it looked in the past, not trying to beat that up. That's what this is about. Let's not forget the main objective here. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make an address? No? Counsel? Anyone? Kathleen, let's vote.
Mopin.
No.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Next up is resolutions. Robert?
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving contract for the north end of the depot.
I need a second.
Second.
This resolution here would approve a contract with Frank Millard Company for thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to do the work to bring the north end of the depot up to standard. I had approval prior back in December. I know that there has been some things that have changed, so this resolution is brought in front of you to decide where this goes. So, I guess I'll leave it at that.
I can address that. I said on the senior center advisory board at this point, and they, looking at all the options they had in front of them versus staying where they're at or moving to the depot, they have opted to stay where they're at. So, what I would recommend we do is we vote this down today, wait and see what we can do to develop that area at a later date, because they're not going there, so. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or concerns? Counsel? Let's vote.
Mopin.
No.
Rinker.
No.
Phillips.
No.
Kreitzer.
No.
Number two.
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the two thousand and twenty Community Catalyst Building Remediation Grant Agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the project at three hundred Washington Street.
Second.
City previously applied for a grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a hundred thousand dollars for Community Catalyst and Building Remediation Grant. The city was awarded those funds as part of the application. Downtown Partners is the sub-recipient of that grant. They previously entered into a development agreement with the city for this project. Part of that was securing a letter of credit to back up this grant. If they do not fulfill their requirements, the city has a letter of credit that can, they could act upon to pay back those funds if need be, but we're hoping that's not the case. But the funds are for stabilization and repair of the Elks Building at three hundred Washington in the amount of a hundred thousand. Project completion date is stated on the grant as January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Tisland. Is there anyone in the audience who has any thoughts or concerns? Mr. Freevert?
Steve Freevert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. Just want to thank you for your support through this very long process. We cannot wait to get this work started.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Counsel, any thoughts, concerns? None. Let's vote. Kathleen, please.
Mopin.
Yes.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Number three.
I have a resolution approving the agreement to extend planning option for the riverfront property and north of two hundred North Front Street, the Burlington Memorial Auditorium. Second.
Mr. Jim or Eric? Who wants it?
Neither of us. So, we had a presentation at the last work session for a request from the developers to extend the option agreement, the planning option agreement that we signed back in August. The original option agreement had a year's extension built within it. This would be taking, would be approving the use of that one-year extension to the planning option agreement as a look at options for developing the auditorium and potentially a hotel adjacent to it.
Okay. Is there any thoughts or concerns from the audience? Counsel? All right, we're gonna let him take a look at it, I guess. Vote, please.
Mopin.
No.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Kreitzer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Now, next are comments from the audience. We want your thoughts and concerns. However, please realize if you bring something to counsel, if it's not on the agenda, we may not discuss it tonight. Is there any discussion or comments from the audience? I see none. Next comments from, anything from the city staff? Don? Rhonda? Chief? Fire Marshal? Nick? Stephanie? Eric? We got you on the side. Jim?
John, maybe I didn't understand the question. May I bring up something concerning the Cascade Bridge at this, is this the?
Sure, this would be the time, yes. But we, just so you understand, we, yeah, come on up. We may not be able to answer your questions.
That's why I'm right.
Okay, come on up. And then we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Terry Ariano, two thousand eight hundred South Main Street. I've been in here several times saying that what I want to do is help the council with Cascade Bridge. And so, a group of people, including myself, signed a contract with Working Bridges to bring some engineers in and do some research, and they are gonna have that information available this Thursday. And so, we are publicizing the fact that we're gonna finally have this information back. We do have a lot of details that I think are very interesting, such as the contract and the blueprints from when the bridge was repaired in nineteen fifty-three. We also have the people who bid on doing some of the contracts for the concrete work in the past. They didn't get it, but since then, they have purchased the company that did get that contract back thirty years ago. So, they have some history on that. And then we also have direct contact with the people who painted the bridge last time, abated the lead paint, and painted it, and then are also giving a current bid on what that would take. If I knew what this report said, I would tell you right now, I don't. Lisa Walsh and I are the two that are co-chairs trying to keep this organized, and she's gonna bring also some economic numbers to the table that have to do with the Iowa Mississippi River Parkway National Mississippi Parkway Organization, how they see that, and also with the Great River Road Commission, which she's also one of the people that are on that commission. So, we're just gonna, once we have that, which will hopefully be on Thursday via email besides doing a presentation to the public, we're gonna email it to everybody on the council so that you have it, too. So, we're just gonna go from there and put it out there, and hopefully that could be a consideration and an option, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I did bring a little flyers, and I'll put it over there if I could, if anybody wants to come. It's at the F and M Bank on Thursday, the sixth, six o'clock, on the second floor, Conference Room two one six, two sixteen.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jim?
My turn to do radio this week, so. Counsel would be next week. Next week has the conflict with Southeast Iowa Days for those who are going up on Wednesday, Thursday. So, keep in mind for, I think we got potentially two who are here.
Yeah, we had Linda, and I think Work might have tried to schedule me something for the same day, but I'll go with Linda. If she's by herself, is that okay, or do we need to?
Yeah, we need two for council talk.
Okay, so.
Are you going to Southeast Iowa Days?
Yeah, I'm going.
Billy, you going to Southeast Iowa Days?
No, I have a. He has a prior commitment.
The other part of that, I know that Nick is ready to do standby and be available to do that if you are not able to do it. So, that's something to keep in mind as we move forward.
I'd rather talk to Nick anyways, I think, right?
Is radio every second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday every month.
Second Wednesday every month. So, it stands right now, you and Linda, because I know she committed to it, so.
Right, and I did, too, and then someone was trying to make plans for me.
Okay, so if you can't, we'll have Nick stand.
All right, I appreciate it.
All right, keep us posted on that.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Bill, do you got anything to add tonight?
No, I'm good.
Matt?
No, I'm looking forward to tomorrow, because I don't have to listen to the political ads anymore.
Well, you'll just have to listen to less. Robert?
No, just, other than I still see people driving unsafely. Today, I was out by the roundabout, and someone actually stopped in the middle of the roundabout to let me in when I had the yield sign. And then the speed at which people are traveling is kind of scaring me lately. I don't know if it's I'm just getting older or I have kids, but please, if you're doing fifty miles an hour down Roosevelt. 50 miles an hour down Roosevelt, the speed limit's 40. And then other areas, I mean, just be mindful of the weather conditions and the people around you.
Okay, is that it? The only thing I would remind everybody, it's caucus night, so please, please, if you're going, remember that it's civil conversations, get things done, so. If there's nothing else, we stand. Yes, sir?
I think Pastor Starling wanted to address you guys about something.
Oh, he did? Okay. Did you want to speak faster?
We're willing to wait on you. We like you.
Oh, praise. I almost said praise the Lord. You all have church here. I am, praise the Lord, I am Freddie Starling, 517 South Seventh Street in Burlington, Iowa, and I'm grateful and appreciative of your support on the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration. It was our, I think, our 33rd year that the Lord has blessed us to be in the city and striving to make a difference and keep the dream alive and to participate and encourage others to come in and celebrate with us as we work together. That's my theme 484 times. You may find that in the scripture. I believe in and I strive to work together. We can learn a lot from one another, and we can share ideas, and we can come together, and we can sense the feelings of others. And I'm not a selfish person, and I pray that you're not a selfish person. So, I want to just thank you and appreciate you, and I hope that you enjoy the Dr. Jones, who certainly, certainly has been a blessing with us and ministering with him down through the years. Thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to the next year, God bless us as it's saying. Do want to say this, by way of announcement, we don't have it all together. Together is my theme. That's been my theme for the last two years, together. We're better together, we're stronger together, we unite our forces together, and I believe that's in the upcoming about the president and all of that. We need one another. So, on the February 15th, as we are celebrating, as is known as Black History Month, we are having a breakfast at Faith Temple, starting at 7 o'clock, from 7 to approximately 10 on that Saturday. And it's going to be seeking information from those that don't have a job, don't have a trade, what skills do you have, what's your vision, what would you like to do, where do we go from here? It's time for a change, and let that change begin in us, in individuals. And I don't, I don't think it's just for any one or two groups of people. I think it's for the entire human people to come together and to share and to help and enlighten one another, let them know what they can go and better their skills and jobs and what is holding you back. We don't need to be pointing a finger at any one individual holding us back. So many times, I just hold myself back by not getting up and getting out. And I notice, I preach this, and I said it, I said, "All the snow was out there, and I really didn't see not one particular race with a shovel on their back going to shovel snow, shovel driveways." I mean, there are things we can do to help ourselves. I say, I was, and Shrem, Shane McCamell, know I, I was just one, and I'm trying to pat myself on the back, but I picked tomatoes, I worked at Mercy Hospital, I washed windows, I cleaned basements. I wasn't a lazy person, but this is what we want to do. We want to see if we can motivate young people, and my heart is heavy because so many are going to prison off of little penny ante drugs. And what are we doing? What am I doing as a pastor? Well, I'm preaching every Sunday in church, and I'm praying, and I'm doing, what am I doing out on the street? You know what I mean? So, this is where my heart is. Let's unite our forces together, and let's see if we can make a change. This is 2020, and I'm seeing and I'm sensing much to happen in the 2020 as we go forward. So, I thank you for listening to me. I pray that you will come and give your input. We're going to have Dr. Barry McQuarrie from McComb, we're going to have Dr. Sadler from McComb University. They are part of our, they are part of our church there in McComb, Dr. S. Rulich and Professor Watkins and several of them, just have a spot to help us, to see some things that they may share with me, and I can help pass them on, and your input, we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, well, I think that's.
Is there comments from the audience?
No. Man, you would think you would know.
You know, I just wanted to say, since I'm down here, I would be remiss to say, it's just a lovely, lovely council.
State your name and address, please.
Name and address, please.
I don't appreciate your attitude. Shane McCamell, 2112 Mason Road. It's just good to see just a lovely, fantastic-looking council, excluding Jim, of course. He kind of brings you guys down in the looks area, but you can't have perfection. I just want to thank you guys tonight for going and passing that. Again, I know that you guys did receive some guff. I want to personally thank Matt Rinker, who I had no doubt would remain strong to his beliefs. He's just built that way, and I can respect that. I want to thank Rob, because, Rob, you've got a heart, and I knew that you would see through all the mess and understand what was most important, that it was down there always for others. John, I'm not going to go into what I've got to say about you. I'll just leave it there, but I appreciate you, Mayor. And Mr. Moppen, you voted no. And you know what? You said no from the very beginning, and I can respect that. So, I want to appreciate you, even though you didn't vote the way I wanted you to, that's how you felt, and I can respect that. And that's the way it is, that some people may not agree with how you vote with some things, but just remain true, and people will respect that. I respect you guys tonight. And Kathleen, it's always a pleasure to see you. ET?
All right. I believe that is it, so we will need a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, motion closed.
Second. Kathleen, vote, please.
Moppen.
Yes.
Rinker.